Victoria Rodriguez. Victoria Rodriguez.
Me llamo Victoria Rodriguez. Me llamo Victoria Rodriguez, vivo en el 35-38 de la 95th Street, Jackson Heights, Queens. Pagamos mucha renta, solo mi esposo trabaja. Queremos que no aumente la renta. Queremos cero por ciento de aumento. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Rodriguez. I live at 35-38 95th Street. We pay way too much in rent. Just my husband works and we don't want there to be a rent increase. We are also requesting that there be a zero percent increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Muchas gracias. Luceli Hincapi. Juana Cabrera.
Mi nombre es Juana Cabrera. Mi nombre es Juana Cabrera. Y vivo en el 34-34 de la 77th Street, en Jackson Heights, Queens. Ahí estoy viviendo por 25 años. Y comencé pagando 700 dólares cuando eso yo trabajaba y podía pagarlo. Pero hoy estoy pagando 1221 porque cada año me incrementan las rentas. Ya no puedo trabajar y soy subsidiada por mis hijos. Así que ese es un ejemplo de que esto no hace daño a todos. A todos. No solamente a nosotros los de bajos ingreso, también a las personas que ganan más. Porque de una u otra forma muchas veces son subsidiados, somos subsidiados, lo que no podemos... I'm sorry.
My name is Juana Cabrera. I live at 34-34 77th Street in Jackson Heights, Queens. I've been living there for 25 years. Initially, when I started to live there, I paid 700 dollars in rent. I was working back then and I could pay that. Today, I pay 1,221 dollars and the rent is going up every year. Now I can't work. I'm subsidized by my children. And this is something that really hurts all of us, people of low-income people and others as well.
Pues somos subsidiados por los hijos. Los nuestros hijos también, nuestros hijos también tienen sus obligaciones que no pueden pagarnos las rentas, ayudarnos con las rentas, principalmente los míos, no sé lo de los otros. Pero ellos no pueden pagar la renta mía. Entonces, por eso queremos cero. Cero incremento, no más alza de la renta porque vamos para la calle. Vamos a ser, vamos a ser más hungry. Okay, muchas gracias y perdón por yo no hablar el idioma, pero he hecho todo el esfuerzo y no he podido.
So, we're subsidized by our children. Our children have their own responsibilities. They shouldn't have to pay our rent. And because of that, we're asking for a zero percent increase on our rent and no increases at all. Thank you for your attention and I apologize for not speaking the language.
Luceli Hincapi. Kersh Mian. Siad Tirmizi. Luceli Hincapi.
Luceli Incapié. Luceli Incapié.
Kersh Mian.
Siad Tirmizi, right?
Luceli Hincapi.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Luceli Incapié. Yo vivo en el 43-38 de la 39 Place por 37 años. Yo no quisiera que aumentaran la renta porque yo soy una persona sola. Y yo vivo solo de lo que me dan del social. Entonces yo no tengo chance para ninguna otra cosa, solo para pagar mis bills, más nada. Me gustaría que la renta siguiera, siguiera lo mismo porque yo no puedo, no puedo pagar más.
My name is Luceli Incapié. I lived at 43-38 39 Place for 37 years. And I'm requesting that there be no rent increase. I live alone and I'm only able to live there because I do live by myself. I depend on my social security and that's all I have to pay my bills. And I would really like for there not to be a rent increase.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Kersh Mian. Kersh Mian.
Hi, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kersh Mian. I reside in Jackson Heights. I've resided in Jackson Heights since 1971. I was five years old when we moved there from the Bronx. I inherited the apartment from my mother, who worked two jobs to put her kids through Catholic school, clothes on our backs and food in our stomachs. Hard-working woman. And because she was able to work two jobs and able to pay a reasonable rent, I inherited that apartment. And I've been an activist for tenants' rights, especially with immigrants, since 2003. I've seen a lot of my neighbors grow old gracefully and they still have their apartments. One thing that I've noticed is that there are no big real estate owners here, just small-time owners. Where are the big owners, the ones who are gouging working-class New Yorkers? We have laws with MCUs, MCIs, major capital improvements. My landlord had put in for a rent increase for a new boiler, but that boiler was only 10 years old. And it was because of my thinking that I had the receipt of the previous landlord that there's a 25 or 30-year life expectancy for a boiler. So we were able to stop them from getting another rent increase from an MCI. A lot of the people in my building, they're immigrants, they're elderly, they don't know these things. So, from the reality, I hope that the Rent Guideline Board realizes that New York is under threat of unaffordability. Really. I see it. I see it with my neighbors. They're not able to have extra income to buy nutritious food or they rely on junk food. And then we have, you know, medical bills because of that junk food. It's like a vicious circle. And we have to take into that consideration that holistically, you know, New York City really needs to keep a hold of their affordability. Because where are we going to go? Where are we going to go? Even those of us who do have the ability to earn a decent wage, still scared because we know the economy can change in a second. Look at 2008. A lot of people lost their pensions and had to start over in their 50s and 60s. How realistic is that? And no one was held accountable for that. So, I understand where the small landlord comes from. But New York City is, I don't believe that small landlords make up the bulk of the rent-stabilized units in New York City. It's big investment money, it's pension funds that are funding this. They're grabbing, they're grabbing rent-stabilized stock, housing stock, and trying to force out long-term tenants. I've experienced it. I've been to court many times. I'm probably good, as better a lawyer than anybody. So, we have to take that into consideration. We have to take into consideration the elderly, the immigrant population, people who are struggling, good people, decent people. They are struggling to make ends meet. It's, just imagine what it is to try to make ends meet in New York City. Just put yourself in those shoes and you'll come to an understanding and appreciation of why tenants are organizing to be able to live here in a decent way.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony. Siad Tirmizi. Rosella Quintero. Teresa Brito. Mr. Tirmizi.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. See, I am here. I came here and I signed my first lease in 1997.
Sir, could you talk into the microphone a little?
It's 36 years now that I've been living in the same apartment and when I signed my lease for $2.35 per month. Now it has gone up more than $900 while my wages have not gone so far by that ratio. One thing. The other thing is that I'm 83 years of age and I'm still working just to meet my ends. I'm living with my wife over there and I recently find out when I was looking at my papers that I sign only two years' lease every time. And when I signed my lease for 2008 and 2009, it was 7.25 percent I was charged as an increase. And the next lease was 2010 and 2011, it was for 8.05 percent. So I think there's too much for us because we are not getting that much wages at all. So I'll just request that, I mean, there should be a little consideration for that. And I thank you very much for that.
Thank you for your testimony. Rosella Quintero. Teresa Brito. Rosalba.
Voy a hablar en español. Mi nombre es Rosalba Quintero. Mi nombre es Rosalba Quintero. Y mi dirección es 37-52 89th Street, apartamento 11 Jackson Heights, 1172. Mi, el dueño de este edificio se llama Jonah Rosenberg. He vivido por 38 años y 4 meses. Y necesitamos la reducción de renta, el cero por ciento, porque mi socio, todo se va en renta. La mayoría de las personas que viven en este edificio son personas de pocos recursos económicos. Y de verdad que la renta está, la están subiendo cada día más y fuera de eso que el señor no da buenos servicios en el edificio. Entonces necesitamos que nos ayuden porque la mayoría de nosotros somos personas que recibimos un social y todo se nos va en renta, no más. Escasamente para pagar renta es por no quedarnos en la calle. Espero que ustedes se pongan el corazón en su pecho y se den cuenta que mucha gente, necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes.
My name is Rosalba Quintero. I live at 37-52 89th Street in Jackson Heights. And I am the owner of the building where I live. His name is Jonah Rosenberg. I've lived there for 38 years since 1977, 38 years and 44, and 4 months. So we need a zero percent rent increase because the majority of us live on and depend on our social security and that's how we were able to pay our rent. The majority of the people that do live in the building are dependent on our social security and we have very, very little, low, low income. So we are hoping that the rent does not increase. And we know that every year the rent is increasing. The owner doesn't even provide appropriate services and maintaining the building. And we need for the board, for you here, to help us. The majority of us are dependent on social security and we just don't want to end up on the street. So please, you know, have a heart and please try to help us so that we don't become homeless.
Muchas gracias. Thank you for your...
Thank you and God bless you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Teresa Brito. Estoy aquí para anunciarle que que mi renta, yo vivo en el 37-52 89th Street, apartamento 2A. Y estoy aquí para avisarle que, por favor, quiero que no me aumenten más las rentas. Estoy pagando mucha renta. Me mudé ahí en el 2001 y pagaba 1,121 y ya estoy pagando 1,400 y pico por ahí, largo ya. Y por favor, que no me suben más. Yo soy una mujer viuda, no tengo un esposo. Mis hijos son los que me ayudan a pagar renta. Yo no trabajo. Estoy enferma y no puedo trabajar. Gracias. Dile bendiga.
My name is Teresa Brito. I live at 37-52 89th Street in Apartment 2I in Jackson Heights. And I've lived here since 2001. I initially started to pay $1,021 in rent and today I pay $1,420 in rent. I live, my children help me out. I'm a widow. I don't have a husband. And please help us in terms of, with our situation.
Muchas gracias. Jose Jena. Janelle. And then Kat Thompson on behalf of Senator Leroy Comrie. Ivan Umana.
Hi. I'd like to thank you all for at least giving us a podium to speak and for you to consider our statements as you make this decision. First thing I want to say is, you know, this country, this city is built on opportunity. I mean, New York is one of the largest cities in the world and everybody looks at us and what we do. People are working two, three jobs just to maintain themselves. I mean, they're trying to have food on the table, time for their children. Parents cannot have two jobs and able to maintain attention to their children, help them with their homework and everything. While I sympathize with owners, I mean, the small-time owners, that yes, things get expensive, but not just for them. It gets expensive for all of us. When gas prices were up, I had to fill my car. When the fruits and vegetables are high, I still have to buy them. So, I currently am on temporary disability. I just had a major surgery two months ago on my ankle. How long I'll be out, I don't know. So basically, my wife is working and I'm collecting that. Any tragedy can happen to any of us, put us really check to check. I would love to say I own two or three properties, that I'm making my living by renting apartments. Not that I would say it's easy, but it would be nice to say that, that that would be my thing. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that I get up early in the morning and we come back home around 8, 9 o'clock at night. And every time we have a hit, something happens, we're behind. We have all the same bills they pretty much have and then some. We are built to help each other out. This city is supposed to help us grow. And that's not what's been happening. The middle class, the lower class have been pushed. Every time you look at Manhattan, you see a new structure being built. And those guys are pushed into Queens, then they build new structures in Queens. They're pushed to another place. Exactly where is it that you guys expect us to go? We have no more places to go. We just want a roof over our head and the opportunity to make it forward and to make it up. So we can get a step ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony and I hope you recover quickly. Kat Thompson on behalf of Senator Leroy Comrie.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kat Thompson. I'm representing State Senator Leroy Comrie, Senator for the 14th Senate District. I'm just going to read his statement. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He's still in Albany today. Okay. "I am unyielding in my support to extend the state's rent control guidelines and to keep New York City affordable for those most vulnerable to rising costs. Our seniors, the disabled, and our veterans are some of the prime recipients of rent control programs. As a senator representing neighborhoods with a diversity of incomes and age brackets, making sure that all constituents are equally protected and can afford a good quality of life is one of my top priorities. Recently in the Senate, I introduced a bill to assist a 103-year-old man named Julius Diamond, who, due to an unexpected temporary increase in his income, forfeited his SCRI eligibility. Although Mr. Diamond was able to successfully reapply for SCRI benefits, his rent was reinstated at a freeze that was hundreds of dollars more than the sum he had previously, despite the fact that his income had not increased in a permanent way, in a permanent way, excuse me. The bill S5465, which is expected to pass in the Senate by the close of this session, would restore to Mr. Diamond the benefits he had before, before his income level changed and ensure that he can live comfortably given his income for the remainder of his life. Seeing the issues of many, like Mr. Diamond, Senator Savino introduced S5721A, a bill intended to prevent seniors and persons with disabilities from being dropped by the SCRI program. This bill would grandfather in anyone in the program as of January 1st, 2015, even if their rent does not meet the one-third ratio requirement. I proudly co-sponsored that bill in the Senate and will continue to advocate for its passage. Many changes have come to Queens in the past decade. Emerging immigrant populations, rapid urban development, and a growing emphasis on cultural and historical preservation and advancement are some of the many facets of Queens' ongoing evolution. However, at its heart, Queens is a borough of neighborhoods, of families. The nation is watching how our state moves forward. If we claim to be the state of the middle-class working families, we must act like it. Improving the quality of a neighborhood while remaining true to its character can sometimes prove a difficult balance, but we cannot waver in our commitment to ensure that people have lived in our community for years and continue to thrive in them. We need to stop wasting time and make real action. The clock is running out and we need to pass strong rent control laws now. Thank you."
Thank you so much. No problem. Ivan Umana. Carmen Hidalgo. Katrina Cortez. Ivan Umana.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here, also for us. And the reason for why I'm here is because I'm a tenant. I live at 34 Dodge 47 90th Street. This is in Jackson Heights. And I'm living in the apartment, in the same apartment for 35 years. Since I moved over there in the building, the rent was moderating, right? Stabilization rent, but was moderating. But unfortunately, our new landlord came out buying the building with MCIs and unfortunately, since they had the right that when the MCI is finished to pay, they had to bring that cap on top of our rent. The rent has been going up and up and up. That's so far, right now, I'm paying almost $1,000 of my rent, for my rent. And it is half my salary and I am a person that my family has been claimed by cancer, my three sisters. And then, right now, I am the only one who supports my mother. So I had to be in care of her. I had to buy medications for her that is not covered. And for me, the increase of the rent, well, it's going to be a burden. It's too much money. And it's something that, if the rent continues going up the way it is and out of control, then what we have to do and what the city is going to do when all the citizens start leaving the city and going to live in other places and just leave it to the people who just want, you know, to build their buildings and go with the rents as high as, you know, that people cannot afford to pay. So please, at the panel that you are over here to represent us, I will appreciate if, you know, the rent, the lowest that they can increase it, the better for us because I also, as a tenant, I understand that they have expenses, that there is people who do not care for the places and that they need to do renovations and change the apartments. But please, to be considered, that, you know, that it doesn't be so high, no more than, what, you know, 3.5 or 0. To consider, many of us, especially the elderly, who are living out of the social security, where they're going to go when they were the ones who, in the last past century, to the, until the time that they retired, they went the one who built this city and did what we are having now. So please have some consideration about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you so much.
Katrina Cortez. Nahida Uden.
Hi, my name is Katrina Cortez. I live in Jackson Heights, New York. I am a native New Yorker, born and raised in Queens, born and raised in Jackson Heights, right on Junction Boulevard. I'm pretty young, right? I'm only 22 years old. But I got into the movement in New York City because of gentrification. I've seen my friends in my own neighborhood that I grew up with being pushed out of my neighborhood and my city because they can't afford their rent. I grew up personally being relocated from apartment to apartment, going from one apartment that is overly infested with rats to another where the ceiling's falling apart. And imagine that with like two parents, one unemployed, and two baby kids. These are, these are like the real lives of tenants in my neighborhood and in Queens. I'm seeing, I'm seeing people that I grew up with, I'm seeing my community being pushed out of my city and in really disgusting, really disgusting manners. I work with various community organizations because all of this is really troubling. You know, I talk to tenants who experience, like landlords changing their locks without even notifying them, charging them like $200 and they have to go pick up the key in Manhattan. And this is in Queens. And these tenants don't always speak English, right? Then, Jackson Heights is like extremely diverse neighborhood. It's ridiculous to be able to expect people who are working two, three jobs to do these things. And in my, in my work, I've learned that this is strategic. It's extremely strategic to push people out of the community that has nurtured and raised and has been cultivated for decades. I've worked with tenants who, who, who's, these are, these are big corporate landlords and their landlords enter their, enter their buildings without any justification. Like literally people chilling at home and then, hello, someone's coming in my apartment with no warrant. These, these are completely unlawful tactics. These are very strategic. And in the meantime, they expect to raise their rent unlawfully. It's just absolutely ridiculous. These aren't the, these aren't the small-business landlords that are testifying. I think that there are a lot of massive corporation landlords that are really destroying the community and I think a rent rollback is crucial for the tenants of New York City.
Thank you for your testimony. Carmen Hidalgo. Carmen. And then Nahida Uden. And Alexandria To.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carmen Hidalgo. Vivo en el 45-35 de la 40th Street. Yo quisiera pedirles de favor que no haya más aumentos de renta. Soy una persona retirada y lo poco que uno recibe no le alcanza más que para pagar la renta. Yo pidiera a ustedes, miembros de la ciudad, que por favor nos ayudaran a que no haya más incremento de renta. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Hi, my name is Carmen Hidalgo. I live at 45-34 40th Street. And I'm here to request that there not be an increase in the rent. Hopefully, all of you here can help us out and support us and help us in this. We're dependent on subsidies and we need your help.
Nahida Uden. And Alexandria To.
My name is Nahida Uden and I'm a community organizer at CHIA CDC. I meet with tenants every day through individual counseling and tenant organizing in rent-stabilized buildings. And these tenants are concerned about rising rents and often brought to housing court or harassed by their landlords because they cannot keep up with these increases. The tenants that I work with are low-to-moderate-income immigrants who are trying to build a life and future for themselves and their families in Queens. They cannot miss half a day's work, work that consists of 12-14-hour shifts, six or seven days a week, because doing so would jeopardize the possibility of paying their rent on time that month. These tenants want to continue living in Queens, but they are being pushed out of the borough that they call home and the space that they call community. Landlords have many opportunities. Landlords have many opportunities to profit from the pockets of tenants without regard for the cost of, to the quality of life that it has to tenants and their families. Tenants are given this platform to voice their struggles. Please hear these voices and vote for a rollback.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Alexandria Towe, and I do appreciate the fact that you guys took some time this evening to be here to hear us out. I am a child of a mother who was divorced, and when my parents got divorced, my mother had to move us into public housing. We saw horrible things living in public housing, so my mom worked really hard and got us into rent-stabilized buildings. Our quality of life changed instantly. No more urine in the elevators, no more seeing drug addicts hanging out in the staircase, none of that. It afforded my brothers and I an opportunity to have a successful life, because we weren't just bogged down with that on a day-to-day basis. Now, I myself am a single parent of three kids. I was able to put, well, I was able to take a hell of a lot of loans and put two children through college already, and I have one more that I'm working my behind off to get into college. But it's frightening for me, knowing what public housing is like. It's frightening for me to think about what would happen if rent stabilization went away, and I couldn't afford to live. I live in left-right city. I couldn't afford to live in left-right city anymore. It's, as a mother of a son, it's frightening. As a mother of two daughters, it's frightening. And I just really hope that you guys consider what it means for a lot of us to live in public housing, especially when you've, I mean, not public housing, I'm sorry, rent-stabilization or rent-stable, excuse me, rent-stabilized buildings, especially when you've seen the horrors of living in public housing, you know? So I thank you guys for your time again, for your attention, and please consider us. We do, I do consider the landlords, and I appreciate that there has to be some sort of increase from time to time. It can't stay the same. I'm paying $1,400 a month rent, and it started out at 700, you know, years ago. I realize it has to increase. I struggle with, what is it, MCI increases, because it seems as though when those increases become a part of the rent, they stay on forever and ever, even after you've paid the cost of the improvement that we were being built for. So I really hope you guys consider the full aspect of what it means to us sitting in here now if we have to leave where we're currently living because we can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Clever Borja. I explain, I'm going to speak in Spanish because I need to explain so clear for you can understand, I need to talk about. Mi nombre es Clever Borja. Vivo en el 9416 de la 34th Road in Jackson Heights, Queens.
My name is Trevor Borja. I live at 9416 34th Road in Jackson Heights, Queens.
Soy un trabajador de la construcción. Trabajo durante diez años en el área, pero debido al alto costo de la renta, más del 60% de mi salario lo utilizo para pagar renta.
I'm a construction worker. I've been living in the area for more than 10 years. I've been working in the area for more than 10 years, but due to the high cost of living, I pay more than 70% of my salary in rent.
En el edificio donde vivo desde hace diez años, por lo menos el 40% de las familias que antes vivían ahí se han tenido que ver en la necesidad forzosa de buscar en otros sitios donde vivir y donde poder pagar su renta.
In the building where I'm living, where I've been living for the past 10 years, the majority of the families that have lived there have had to look, had to forcefully leave because of the high cost of living.
No puedo entender que los dueños de los edificios digan o dejen pensar que no están ganando lo suficiente con la cantidad que están cobrando actualmente.
I just can't believe that the majority of the property owners aren't able to afford their costs with what they're making.
Todos podemos ver que en ciertos servicios, como por ejemplo la telefonía celular, de cinco años acá, debido a la competencia y al alto consumo que existe, en vez de incrementar los precios, han bajado considerablemente. Y en cambio, el servicio de la renta que tiene una demanda inmensa, ellos digan que están perdiendo como un negocio.
All of snow in certain examples like, let's say, telephone services and cellular services. And just in the past five years, we've seen that the prices have actually decreased because of the high competition that exists between different services. But on the contrary, we see that what happens with rent, even though there is a high demand for rent, there's still extreme high costs.
Tengo experiencia en la construcción y también conozco que debido a los diversos convenios con otros países, los materiales de la construcción también han bajado en los últimos años, y podemos encontrar materiales mucho más baratos que vienen de otras partes y que podemos construir hoy edificios mucho más baratos que hace 20 años atrás.
So I have experience in construction, and I know that also, due to the international competition, a lot of the materials can be found to be a lot cheaper now, and we can build buildings that are actually less expensive than they were before.
Por eso creo que Nueva York es una ciudad para gente que busca oportunidades, pero al tener este tipo de inconvenientes, la clase trabajadora que también aporta en esta ciudad no tenga el espacio o tenga que verse forzada a seguir saliendo de la ciudad de Nueva York o salir en algún momento del estado de Nueva York debido a que ya sus salarios, que no han sido incrementados durante mucho tiempo, que tengan que verse forzadas a salir a buscar otros estados quizá en no iguales condiciones de servicios como las que tiene la ciudad de Nueva York.
So for this reason, I'm a firm believer that New York is a place for people looking for opportunities, and, but I do believe that the working class is being forcefully pushed out of our city, and we have to go look for a place to live in other states because we can't continue to live here.
Es por eso que quiero esta tarde dar este testimonio como un trabajador, como alguien que se esfuerza. Yo trabajo, si tengo que trabajar 10 horas, no es verdad que los migrantes o las personas que vivimos en los buildings, y queremos que esta renta no suba, que se mantenga la ley de renta controlada, no estemos trabajando lo suficiente. Yo conozco a todos mis vecinos que trabajan 10, 12, en algunos casos hasta 14 horas diarias para poder cubrir sus gastos.
So I come here to speak as a worker, a worker that works 10 hours a day or more, and although, you know, the majority of the people in these buildings are immigrants, and we want the rent control to continue, the laws that protect and maintain rent control to continue, because even my neighbors are also working 10 to 14 hours a day.
De tal forma que les agradezco y que consideren que un incremento de renta podríamos estar afectando a muchas más personas de las que tenemos posiblemente registros. Yo los pido como un trabajador más de esta ciudad que contribuye y me esfuerzo para que esta ciudad esté como esté, y contribuyo, pago mis impuestos, pago todo lo que compro, todo lo que consumo, somos parte integral de esta ciudad. Les pido, por favor, consideren que no se puede incrementar la renta más porque nuestros salarios ya no alcanzan.
So I really appreciate the time that you're giving me to speak here, and I'm asking, please do not increase the rent. This is going to affect all workers, and I'm here to speak as a worker, a worker that contributes to the city like many other workers, and I take part in the city, I contribute to the city in the taxes that I pay as well, in everything that I purchase which goes to the city, so.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Charles Gudinski. Charles Gudinski.
So Mr. Gudinski is the last registered speaker. If anyone else would like to speak, please make sure to register. We certainly have time to hear others speak if anyone hasn't registered and would like to speak. So please take this moment to go and register at the front table. Thank you so much.
I own, manage, and maintain a 20-unit, four-story walk-up building in Flushing, Queens. My building is about 80 years old. A 1% increase makes it impossible for me to maintain my 80-year-old building. A 1% increase has me reducing services in the building. I used to have a weekend porter at the building. He was a semi-handicapped man, but he was able to do the job. I had no choice but to let him go. When my tenants asked why I had to let him go, I explained the fact that with a 1% increase, I had to look to cut services someplace. A couple of them said to me, well, we're going to file a complaint. I said, you file a complaint, I sell the building. The next person to buy my building is not going to be as nice as me. It's going to be one of the major developers in Flushing who's going to come in, and they know how to get those people out. I don't know how to do it, I don't have the heart to do it, but the next guy will. And you're pushing the small property owners out of New York City. Your boss, Mayor de Blasio, he turns his back on the police force, and you saw what happened with the police force. They turned their back on him. We are a fundamental part of New York City. We provide one of the most essential things that people need in their lives. People need food, they need shelter. We're providing a shelter. Mayor's going to turn his back on us, we're going to turn our backs on him, and we're going to be forced to sell, and we will sell. That's the only thing we can possibly do at this time, and I really don't think you want that. I have people living in apartments, and I don't begrudge them. I have a three-bedroom apartment, someone's paying me $951.36 a month for the apartment. The parents live there six months a year, and the other six months a year, they live someplace else, and their children are living in the apartment now. I have a three-bedroom apartment, apartment 3A. Parents retired, moved to Manhattan, daughter and son took over the apartment. Both of them are schoolteachers, making over $150,000 a year, but paying me $1152. I have a whole list here like that, but I don't have the time to read them all to you. You need to work with us in order for us to work with you. If you're going to give us 1%, a 2% increase, you're basically going to push us out of business. We'll sell the buildings, and unfortunately, the city is going to go back to the way it was in the 1960s and the 1970s, which is not a pretty picture. So do the right thing. Give us 4% for a one-year lease, give us 7% for a two-year lease. Enable us to maintain the buildings and maintain the tenants' homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Lorraine Lopez. Lauren Springer. And Lesvia Mendez.
Hi, my name is Lorena, and I want to start by saying thank you all for serving in the Rent Against Board. We know that you all take this very seriously, as we do too. I'm a tenant organizer, and I'm here today because every day I see the effects of the past rent increases. To me, it's simple. Tenants need a rent rollback, and more importantly, the city needs a rent rollback. It's hard to see tenants every day who are struggling and come to us for help, but it is not in our hands. It's now in your hands to help millions of tenants who are counting on you right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Lauren Springer. And Lesvia Mendez.
Hi, my name is Lauren Springer. I've lived in, I'm actually a native New Yorker. I was born and raised in Brooklyn. I've lived in Queens, particularly in Sunnyside, for almost 21 years, and I'm proud to be a tenant. But I'm not here for me today. I'm here for my neighbors, I'm here for my friends, I'm here for my community. I'm here because I strongly believe that a rent rollback is the right thing to do here. I'm concerned about the future of New York City and the changing demographics in which there's a greater emphasis on luxury housing and how New York is becoming increasingly unaffordable for the middle class, for lower-income people, and I urge this board to institute a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Lesvia Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Lesvia Mendez. I live in Amherst, Queens, next to Jackson Heights. I'm sorry. I must excuse myself, I'm not a public speaker, and it's hard for me to address so many people. But tonight, I take the opportunity to present my plea and that of thousands of elderly people like myself. I have been retired for the last 11 years. I thought I had planned well for my retirement with my social security check and my union pension check, but I continue, plus I continue to work a part-time job, which I don't anymore because I had a catastrophic accident last year. But last year, as I said, I had a catastrophic accident, and things have changed. Of course, I'm not working my part-time job anymore. Therefore, I fear for my future ability to pay my increasing rent with the permanent MCIs added to it. I don't want to divide my one-bedroom apartment in order to add a tenant, which is forbidden by the landlords, to my household and lose my privacy. Please stop the madness that has taken over our city and is eroding it very, very fast. Thanks for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying.